At this time, I'd like to call the City Commission, the regular City Commission, in a meeting which is being posted for today, June 2nd at 5:30 PM to order and call upon Commissioner Mazmar to leave us in an invitation, please.
Holy God, holy mighty, holy immortal, have mercy on us. Dear God, please shine the light of love. Continue to shine the light of love upon us, and that may we, in return, always shine the light of love, the agape, upon you. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit on earth.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, in whose laws there is liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight, whether you're listening in through our live stream or being here in person. We appreciate your participation. And so the next item is citizen communication input. Do we have any citizen communication from this meeting?
Citizen's communication, yes, we do. The first one is Ron Lang, 204 Parkview Circle, amending city manager's contract and term limits, and he would like to be called. Hello, Mr. Lang. This is Amanda Lisondo, City Secretary with the City of Harlingen.
Yes, ma'am.
And you signed up for public comments. You have two minutes, and I will let you know when you can start. You may start now.
Thank you. So the first point, as far as amending the city manager's contract, it's my contention that the City of Harlingen doesn't necessarily have a tax base that would support a salary that high for a city manager. And on top of that, we, with the population that we have, don't believe that we have projects that would warrant paying someone that much as a city manager. At the same time, I feel like there's been time, enough evidence to show that there hasn't been anything to move the city forward to warrant that amount of money. In terms of the other agenda item that I signed up to speak on, the term limits, on the surface, I believe that it is a good idea for term limits, but then to look at it, we have to have a participation base to, if we have commissioners that are doing a good job and staying on top of things, and their term limit ends, do we have a supply to replace them? Do we have a participation within the community to step in and overtake some of these projects that have begun under some of these? So I would, I feel like maybe we need to do some more research on having term limits and when those term limits should be set. But I appreciate your time. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mayor. The next one is Mary Alice, 1714 La Paloma Avenue, and she would like to be called. It's on item 14. Let's see, item 14. Yes.
Would you mind, like, I can't hear. I'm having trouble. Can you put a little bit louder, like, to the microphone?
Oh, this one, sir, or what?
No, no, when you put on the phone.
Oh, okay, yes.
Thank you.
Let me see. That's all right. Okay, item 14 is discussion, consideration, and possible action. If appropriate, to amend the existing contract between the City of Harlingen and the city manager. So let me follow the lead. Hello, Mrs. Alice. This is Amanda with the City of Harlingen. This is Amanda with the City of Harlingen, City Secretary. You submitted a public comment form, and we're just trying to get hold of you. Thank you so much. Okay, the next one is Ron Lozano, 2410 Riverside Drive, and I believe he's here. And he wants to speak on item 4, 13, and 15.
Well, that's not quite correct. Before we start, Amanda, I did want to speak on items that are 13 through 15. However, you, the mayor has utilized the Attorney General's opinion of reasonable, and so he's been allocating two minutes. And so I guess that's what you're going to continue the pattern of two minutes for all these items? Okay, so tell me when to start, because I'm going to probably have about five seconds on the first one. And then I'll...
Okay, start the timer.
Okay.
Well, then, I'm going to wait for my items, with the exception of this, I'll speak for five seconds on item four, and then reserve my balance until the items come up, as the law says, under 551.007, Section B.
You may start.
Okay. I've already stated that there's a new commissioner, so hopefully we can wait for him. And thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, Mayor, then the next one is Kimberly Gray, 1809 Muckenberg Lane, and item city manager and City of Harlingen. She doesn't like, she doesn't want to be called, so I'll read her comments. And it reads like this, "The fact that the city manager is making $260,000, $260,610 with a 750-vehicle allowance for a city the size of Harlingen is absolutely ridiculous. His pay has increased over $80,000 in the last four years. Beyond ridiculous, that money needs to be spent on the city's horrible drainage issues. City manager needs to take a tremendous pickup."
All right, thank you.
And then, well, there's one more, Mayor. David Garcia, he doesn't want to be called. He wants his items to be read. It goes like this, "To date, I have seen nothing being proposed to improve drainage in my subdivision behind BBVA Bank on Stewart Place behind Masters Road. I asked Andy to come see the post rain on my street, Champion Drive, to view water standing. Currently, there is water standing from Saturday's rain. The water stinks with mosquitoes breeding. If it doesn't drain enough, then all the homes will suffer on septic tank systems. They become inoperable. Please, it is not fair. There are delays, and we should not have to depend on flood insurance to ban eight. What the city is not doing." That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now, go to item one, which is a presentation of proclamation proclaiming June 2021 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month. And if Javier Rubena, Monica Guedo, Frank Gonzalez could join me up here, will present this proclamation. For as people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of the City of Harlingen by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of those people of diverse backgrounds, and whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, and whereas abuse of elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem, affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country, and whereas in 2020, there were 86,614 leading cases of elderly and disabled persons abused in Texas, which 52,506 prefer, and whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported, because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid, and whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, of cultural and ethnic groups, who are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods, or in suburbia, and whereas many of these cases investigated by adult protective services in Texas involve self-deprecating, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now, therefore, I am responsible, mayor of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaiming the month of June 2021 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in the Department of Texas, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or who have disabilities. So you are all with the adult protective services?
Yes, and one of the supervisors for Cameron, that was works, full listing company, and all investigative use, they like that explanation, and lots of supervisors. We're going to be leaving some business cards in the front with the hotline number. Y'all have any questions, or concerns, or can always call it hotline.
All right. Well, we thank you for the work that you do, our community. I know it's hard work, and it is important work. Thank you for reaching out to protect our elders in our communities. So thank you, and thank you for helping to raise awareness.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item two is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 3rd, 2021, and the regular meeting of December 16th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Someone, second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign the motion carries. Next items are 3A through H. Consent agendas or motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like sign, motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Item four, consideration of possible action to select. One of the top three providers, based on the presentations made by representatives of the firms, and authorized the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for associated architectural and engineering services pursuant to the city's request for qualifications, number 2021-08, for the design and project management of the Long Sea Hill Destination Park Phase Two. I don't know whether there's any other presentation by Javier, but...
Yes, good evening, Commissioners, City Commission, I mean, Mayor, City Commission. The, y'all, I guess, heard the presentations earlier from the three architects that scored the highest. And so this is the evaluation criteria that, and the scores that we gave them. Do you want to go to the next, or go down? Of course, this is selection criteria that we scored them on. Go down again, and then, one more. And then, so this is the scoring, the score sheet that we used when we evaluated them. And so what we did was we tallied everybody's score, and then we put it together on that spreadsheet. And so we're here to, of course, hopefully, select the architect for Phase Two.
Go back to the previous page. No, second one. No.
So again, the top architects was Janak, GMS, and Rofa. Not in that order necessarily, but those are the three architects.
And the one that came out with the highest score was?
The one with the highest was number one, GMS. Number two was Rofa, and number three was Janak.
So they made the presentations.
Yes, sir.
Does that change your opinion on anything?
No. I'm just one evaluator, of course, so...
Carlos was one of the ones also.
Yes, sir.
I'll ask you the same question, Carlos.
No, Commissioner, the, my scoring wouldn't change. Again, the purpose of giving the three firms an opportunity to present before you all is, I guess, exercising that option that's in the, that was on the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications, that the City Commission would hear them out of, and then really present it to you all, for you all to make a final selection.
You know, I think the concern I had when, in our last meeting, was, one, I want to make sure that the, like, criteria was, you know, kind of a level playing field, and that we were asking more technical questions than opinionated questions. That was my, my, because they all seem very qualified, right?
Sure.
And it's a very fortunate position to be in, that we're able to choose, you know, the firm that can handle the project, right? And I know there's many more to come, but, like I said, my concern was, you know, when you all are looking at it, is it, is it more subjective, or is it factual? I mean, that it's a level playing field, we're transparent. And if I understood it correctly, everything that's out there, they get in their packet prior to, so there's no surprise questions, or it's kind of all, this is what you're expected, and they turn in the, they turn in their work. Isn't that great?
That is correct, sir. The scoring sheet is part of the RFQ packet that's advertised. And as a selection committee, we, we have those rules or scoring criteria to adhere to. And so the subjective part of it is, is how do you differentiate between a two and a three when you're trying to score them, when many of these aspects are very qualified firms, all of them?
Right. Okay. Enough further questions, sir. All right, well, it's, you know, it's up to the commission now to decide what they want to do in terms of...
I'm motion for an approval for staff's recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, we'll have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Again, thank you all for participating and coming forward and giving your presentations, everybody, that are all super well qualified firms, and, and it's a hard, hard decision, very difficult decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you for sharing.
Okay, item five is a presentation and discussion by Rodrigo Davila, Public Works Director, and Andy Bigstall, engineer, regarding the operation of Public Works Engineering Department.
It is not morning.
Okay, Rodrigo. Rodrigo and Andy.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Today, we're going to give you, hopefully, a brief, but not too brief, representation of the operation that is your Public Works. And so Public Works is separated into nine divisions. They're listed here, sanitation, brush, landfill, recycling. We converted that from a recycling center to a recycling citizen drop-off. We do fleet maintenance, vehicle depreciation, traffic signals, street maintenance, and cleaning. So we do both on that, and of course, our engineering division. To date, we have a total of 106 employees, and that is when we are fully staffed. We do have some openings, mostly drivers, that we want to fill those. And so what does Public Works do? Well, we maintain and improve the city's infrastructure, streets, alleys, signs, traffic signals, as those divisions mention. We also own and operate our own solid waste collection and disposal. And I just wanted to kind of emphasize that we are a transfer station. We are not a landfill, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And we have the operation of the transfer station and recycling drop-off. In addition to that, we support as many other departments that we can in the city. I know last year has been COVID, so we were instrumental in setting up the traffic control for the vaccine clinics, the traffic control for the flu distribution, vaccines, parks, health. I mean, whenever somebody else needs a hand, we try and help as much as we can. This is just some images of our great staff, our reception area, some of our drivers. The one in the brown jackets there, that was a competition that we had a couple of years ago, so it was great to see the guys out there and allow them to compete against other cities in our area. Unfortunately, we didn't win, but we came close. We'll get them next time. Our residential garbage services, we provide services for residential services to 18,765 accounts. Those tend to fluctuate up and down a little bit as we get new citizens that come in, new accounts. Some citizens leave, so that kind of lower. So at any, at any given month, that goes up, maybe 20, 20 up, 20 down, in reference. We do provide service, garbage pickup service, to all our residents there for twice a week, and we do that with 27 cubic yards, and that's a, that's a picture right there of one of those vehicles. And currently, we have nine of those. Unfortunately, I don't have all nine in rotation. Again, we have our drivers. We typically have six drivers. Every now and then, we'll have five or seven, but we make do. But we do have nine vehicles in total in our inventory. Some of them are used as reserved. When a vehicle goes down, then we switch out for that other vehicle, so we don't have any downtime. And then there's some, as the budget process continues, we're hoping to get a replacement truck, and then we'll just be rotating those out. In the commercial, we have front loaders, which is, which you can see here. We service 2,674 commercial accounts. Again, those fluctuate as new businesses come in and sub-businesses drop off. And we can provide service up to seven days a week, and as needed, so they will tell us, or we will work with them, depending on how much garbage they produce. We can provide, you know, once a week, twice a week, again, up to seven times a week. And we have two types of vehicles. We have a side loader, and we have, that's a 30 cubic yard, and we have nine of those as well. Same thing, we have them in rotation. And we have 41 cubic yard, and we have four of those. Those are the front loaders that provide for the dumpsters and such. For some time in-house, we have been working with a company called RouteWare, and we have been developing a GIS system. And I'm happy and proud to say that we are about to go live at the end of this month. We start our training this Saturday. We have equipped all of the trucks with GPS, with cameras. They also have tablets, and so we're going to be able to improve our workflow. We're automating the process. We're going to be able to not only take inventory of how many, for example, residential containers we have out there, but we can show a picture now of when it was serviced, what time it was serviced, and even by who. So that'll help us internally to create better statistics for our drivers, better benchmarks for our drivers. We can use that information to create better routes. We're going to continue the same service twice a week for all of our routes, but we want to do it better, more efficient, and finish in more time. And so hopefully, once we get up and going and we get a little bit of the kinks out, it'd be great to show you another presentation of how it works, and maybe show you some data, if administration allows. Our brush division, brushing divies, we have a citizen drop-off area. This is at the, what we call a scale house, and this is where citizens and contractors can come in, and it's kind of like a self-service. I know the picture's a little bit squishy here, but these are open-top containers. We have four, two on each side. This ramp can provide access to four vehicles at one time, and citizens can come in and just, you know, every weekend or whatever that they clean their homes, we provide that service for them. Just to note that all residents who have a water account get the first 500 pounds of debris or brush that they bring in for free. It's part of the service, and then anything after that, there would be a charge. I believe it's $12 per ton after that.
Is that once a year?
Once a month, once a month.
You really cleaned up that ramp before you took that picture up?
Yes, sir. Well, I mean, we try, we try and clean it once a week. I know we pass our trucks by it. We have those rolls with magnets, so we make sure and pick up a lot of the screws and a lot of the nails and stuff like that to prevent any, any flats. But every now and then, we, we do have some, including for our own vehicles. This is a picture of, I'm sorry, wrong button. Our grapple truck, this is what we use to collect brush and debris when we go out. And a little bit more, I'll show you another, another graphic of the areas and how we divide the city and how we service it. But this is just the equipment that we use. And the reason I'm showing you this one here is because this one is a one-man operation. It's called a grapple. It's also known as a knuckle boom truck. And so the operator can come out of his cabin and go up, and then he operates kind of like a crane arm, and he can pick up logs, concrete, debris, sofas, I mean, pretty much anything we have out there. So it's really helpful when we have alleys that we can't get a regular loader out there, because it's too big. This one provides that type of service for us in separate areas.
How much weight does that carry? I mean, I know it's by tonnage, right?
It's by tonnage. It's anywhere between six and nine tons. We don't really want to overload them. It really depends on, it's more like the bulky items. Sometimes we have a lot of bulk, but it's just, you know, brushes tend to expand, and they take up a lot of air.
And so like stores and whatnot, that's a very essential, right?
Absolutely, sir. It helps us tremendously. In the other alleys where we have more access, or where we pick up on the front, we usually use our, our front loaders. And then they put their brushing debris into brush trucks, which is very similar to this, but it doesn't have the, the arm. And then, of course, down here, we have our air incinerator. And this is what we have at our brush area, which is next to our transfer station, as we collect brush on a monthly basis. And we have citizens who drop off brush. We utilize this to burn the brush, which essentially helps us reduce the amount of brush that we have to transport to Edinburgh. And just to give you some rough numbers, again, it depends a lot on how old the debris is, not debris, I'm sorry, the brush. We can pretty much take about 100 tons of brush and then incinerate it into about 15 tons. And then that's what we transport over. So it's a great tool that we have.
And so turns it into fine ash, rough ash, charcoal?
It, just ash, hard ash. Again, it depends. Some, some of the bigger tree trunks that are more solid, they take a little bit longer, but it brings them down enough, whether they're manageable, they break. We put them in another open-top, and we transport those to, to Edinburgh also. This is our brushing collection map area, and as you can see, we have divided into four areas, and each area gets picked up within a week. And we usually start Area Four the first week of the month, which is where we are now. I don't know if you can see the dates. This one's May, because that's, when I hit the graphic, that's, that's the one that I did. Also, we have been modifying and really working with, with this map to make sure that we have our benchmarks for our drivers, that we do collect each area in that given full week of the month.
So what is Area Four? What neighborhoods or what district is that?
Well, it's not, it's not divided by commissioner district. It's just the city, the city's split up. So the division, the division light here is 7th Street, and so it would be everything west of 7th. And then we use the, the expressway here to come up, and everything north. So everything that's in this color. And so what, what we've done further with this, and I tried to put the link on this map. I wasn't able to with my limited skills, but I understand that we're going to put this PowerPoint on our website afterwards, and I'll get with MIS to help me put the link. So if you, if the link was active, then we could go into our city website. And each one of these areas is kind of broken down by itself within the map, and we're able to tell you when we're going to start, by the date, what area we're picking up, how much we have collected, and where we plan to be next.
That software you were talking about, that you mentioned earlier, is that applicable to this, or that's, that's just trash picking?
Not. That would just be for trash. Yeah, I don't, I don't have GPS on the, on the brush trucks and our, our crew out there. But we do have, we have a daily report that we provide for them. You know what you, you did... You know what, you did X, Y, and Z road, and you were able to collect this much. They bring that in with the tickets that they do every night. So every night, we tally up that, and then we say, okay, for tomorrow, you're going to start this area where you left off, and we expect you to complete this much. And so whether they get to the benchmark or the goal that we set for them, if they get to it, it's great. Sometimes we have a little bit more brush than we anticipate, so then we're able to say, you know what, we didn't get all of Stewart Place, per se. But where we left off, we continue next day, and we provide that notice to our citizens that visit our website.
So unlike trash that's every day, brush pickup is pretty much, is it more heavy, seasonal, like, or whatever, and do you ramp up with staff or with equipment? Or do you do the opposite, ramp down when it's?
Both, so one of the advantages that we have here is because we concentrate on each area a complete week. For example, this week, we're in Area Four, and even though the week started on a Tuesday because we were off on Monday. But should June first have come in on Wednesday, should today would have been June first, then this would have been the week that we were finishing Area Four, and then this is an opening week. So that's when we can advance the first full week on our calendar that we provide to our citizens, which would be, next week would be the first full week, then we would actually be starting there, but we would already been ahead of it.
So how often do you cycle? I mean,
Every four weeks.
So you typically hit an area once a month throughout the whole city?
Yes, the entire city gets collected once a month, yes, sir. And on that, I don't want to call it dead week, but on that dead week, that's kind of off in each month, that's our catch-up. That's our catch-up for, you know, I like to call them rovers. And so I'll always have at least one or two grapples that will either get ahead of the whole crew, or they will stay behind depending on where we started the week. And it's, we're tweaking it, like I said, we're online. Please visit the website, give us some feedback. Let us know if we're keeping it up to date, let us know if the map is easy to read. We're always looking for input so that we can improve, you know. And we will get called out. There's been instances where we have, you know, trucks that break down, and we'll get citizens that'll call me and say, hey, your guy was, you know, at the end of the street, and he never got to mine, and it's already, you know, Thursday, and they usually pick it up on Wednesday. And so, good, they call me on it, and that tells me that they're looking at it, and we explain, we had this incident, we will be out there tomorrow morning, and it gets picked up that next day. This is our transfer station. Again, also still at the scale house. Again, I know we call it the landfill division, but we do not have a landfill. This is a transfer station where we, all of our trash trucks will come in and discharge here in our four bays. And then we put that solid waste into our trailers and semis, and then we transport that to Edinburgh. And this is just a representation of the tonnage in comparison to last year to this year. And just to keep in mind that these numbers here are from October, the beginning of the fiscal year for 2021, which is October through mid-May. And just to show that all of last year, we did eighty-eight thousand, and this is in tons. And here we are in the beginning of May, and we already had fifty-three point six thousand tons. And all of the rest were just divided, the fifty-three is divided by the residential, commercial, brush, and the citizen drop-off area, which was the scale house that I showed. Our recycling citizen drop-off is located, I don't know if you remember, in the beginning of the pandemic in March, when we got direction to go ahead and close the recycling center for COVID. We had originally started with two locations. It was here on South Commerce where it is now, and the other one was at the scale house. And again, we listened to our citizen feedback, that they were letting us know that it was taking too long, it was too far. So in talking it over with administration, the decision was made that we close that one down and move all operations to South Commerce, which we have to date. I believe we started with six containers. We have since added all the way to ten containers, and two of those are ADA compliance. We've also been renovating the canopy that was kind of damaged with some wind and needed some maintenance. We have just finished, we hired somebody, and they just finished. I wish I had some pictures of it, I wasn't able to get pictures, but the canopy that was directly behind the center has been completely redone, new roof, new ties. We're not going to start working on the floor, even it out a little bit, there was some spots that were a little bit low. And then we hope to move some of this, some of these containers into that low area to provide more coverage for our citizens, provide better access, kind of give them a better turnaround. Right now, it's a little bit tight, and so we want to expand that operation as citizens continue to use. And since we started this operation, and what happens is the citizens come and they fill up the containers, and we are only collecting white paper, cardboard, plastics, one and two, aluminum and tin. And then we transport that to the city of McAllen, who has their operation still going. And so we want to be able to provide more. We are taking accounts here, right? So far, we've done a hundred and seventy tons. In years past, we were averaging about nine hundred and sixty-nine to one thousand tons per year. So that has come down, we are collecting less commodities. We have also noticed that aluminum and tin are the lowest ones. So we may come back here pretty soon and request that we change maybe this for some other commodities that are working more. We're working with our group in McAllen to see what they want to receive more of, and then we'll put it out to our citizens to see what they want to recycle more of, and hopefully, we can make those changes and recommendations. Our fleet maintenance division is made up of one fleet manager. We have some mechanics. Thus far, again, to date, till mid-April, we have done one thousand six hundred and forty-three work orders. And those work orders are anywhere from tire repairs, tire replacements, repairing our hydraulic systems, general engine and transmission repairs. And last year, we upgraded our software and our new techs that are coming in, because we have two of them that are new, are getting trained on that new software to help them diagnose and repair heavy-duty vehicles as well, so.
Are you having to, are you having to sub some of that work out?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure they can't maintain all our vehicles. And if it's under warranty, I would imagine it goes to the thing, but any non-warranty item, are we having to sub? What's the percentage of that? If you had six hundred, sixteen hundred work orders that you completed, how many ballpark are you subbing?
I don't have that number for you, I didn't break it down like that for this presentation, but I can provide that for you tomorrow morning. Certainly, that is something that we do.
There's always a percentage, I just want to know, is it twenty-five percent, fifty percent?
I wouldn't want to guess, sir, I will give you an exact number tomorrow morning. And absolutely, we do have to, right? Whatever's under warranty, but there's also some items that we are just not equipped or trying to do, and so we have to send those to the dealership as well. Our vehicle depreciation and acquisition. So this is a division that we look at the depreciation of vehicles that are of all city-owned vehicles and equipment. We use this chart to also purchase new equipment for all city departments. We provide all the departments with new, lost, or renewed license plates. We prepare all the paperwork for the auction. And our depreciation schedule, it takes care of, right now, currently, five hundred and one vehicles and equipment. And that worksheet is basically a tool to help us determine when a vehicle is due for replacement. Traffic signals. We currently maintain eighty-nine traffic signals throughout the city, eighty-seven school flashing beacons that are solar-powered, and thirty-one flashing beacons that are just electrical-powered. Thus far, again, to date, we've converted two hundred and forty-nine street lights that were the regular yellow ones to LEDs, and that's in partnership with AEP. And we're going to continue, we're shooting for two every fiscal, two hundred, I'm sorry, every fiscal year, and this year, we're able to do two forty-nine, which is great. Again, thus far, they've conducted forty-one traffic studies. And due to COVID, we had not been placing any of the banners, but we're happy to say that on June nineteenth, we're having our announcement to the Freedom Fest, and that's going to be the first banner that we're going to put up, and we're hoping to get that going and put a lot more banners as the times continue to get better. This is just a picture of our crew out there working on traffic lights. What is that, First and Madison and Jackson and First Street? Anytime we repair signs or lights, or we add additional signs, this is just some of the equipment that our guys use out there. This is a map, and I'm sorry, it's a little bit hard to see, but this is the street lights, the current street lights that we have in the city and the ones that we're proposing. They're color-coded here to represent what kind of light, what's the wattage, what's the type, and then what's being replaced. And again, once we put this on our website for people to see, then we can provide a better map that they can zoom in and out if, should they want to see more details on the map. I can tell you that currently with AEP, we have three thousand nine hundred and fifty-one lights, and with Magic Valley, we have two hundred and forty-seven. Our street division, the mission of the, I'm sorry, the mission of this division is responsible for maintaining city streets in good condition. They install traffic signals, and any drainage improvement is necessary for the safety of the citizens of Harlingen. Again, to date, we have two hundred and sixty-three centerline of miles, I'm sorry, centerline miles of paved city streets, fifty centerline of paved state roads, eight point five centerline miles of unpaved streets, and sixty-seven centerline miles of alleys, which sixteen miles of those are paved. A hundred and thirteen miles of sidewalks, a hundred and twenty-seven miles of storm sewer lines, and thirteen miles of open ditches.
On the sidewalks, is that including all the new sidewalks?
Yes.
I had a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
This is the department that also deals with speed bumps, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what is the process for speed bumps?
There's a process that, I'm sorry, there's a process that the citizen that is requesting it, pretty much, it's an email or a phone call to our engineering department, and then there's several forms that pick up. Once the person wants to continue with the process, right, they have to fill out the application and stuff, and then we do the traffic counts, and then our engineering department continues to review that documentation to see if it warrants a speed limit, and then they make the recommendation.
And who pays for it? Does the city pay for it, or do the citizens?
So in the beginning, when the program started, I believe there was ten that the city paid for, all those have been installed. And so the process is now that the citizen would pay for it, that's in our ordinance. However, our ordinance does say that if a commissioner is to install, request the process, then of course, it would be on the hands of the city.
Okay, so if a city commissioner requests a speed bump, then the city covers it?
If it warrants, yes.
If it warrants it.
If it warrants it. Again, we would bring it back.
But how does that, how does that work? If it's warranted, why would we make the citizen pay for it? Or did I not hear that right?
Yeah, because speed bumps, from what I understand, they're expensive, correct? They're like about what, can you give me like a rough estimate on just a general speed bump?
And the last quote we got, I believe correctly, and if I'm wrong, but I believe we're like around sixty-three hundred?
Okay. Yeah, because I find it just kind of unreasonable where you can expect, you know, some of the citizens to pay for that, because I know for a fact in my district, there are several neighborhoods in my district that need speed bumps. And that was one of the big things, surprisingly, when I was campaigning and asking, what is it that you guys need? And that was one of the major complaints, is speed bumps, speed bumps. But then they're saying, okay, they're making us pay thousands of dollars, but how can we afford them? You know what I mean? Like, the average citizen can't afford to just pay, okay, sixty-three hundred dollars. Even if they get in a neighborhood and say, hey, let's, you know, come up, but honestly, how many people from a neighborhood are going to be like, okay, here's a thousand bucks? Let me go and, you know, chip in for the speed bump. So that's not realistic. So you're telling me right now, so if a city commissioner requests it, and if it's warranted, like you said, then the city covers it?
So let me ask this question. During the development of a community or housing, do we do traffic counts? And if there's speed bumps warranted, do we put that onto the developer?
I don't believe that's in our process. I mean, we will check the road condition.
Is that normal to make the citizens pay for a speed bump? I mean, is that standard?
I believe it is, sir. I mean, I know we have it in our ordinance, I can certainly look more into it and provide some more feedback.
Can you email me that ordinance?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Because if it's warranted, then that would mean it would become a safety issue, right? There's a safety component to that, right? I mean, maybe because it's in a neighborhood, or children crossing, or if it's a thirty mile an hour zone, and people are going to go down fifty miles an hour during a stretch of highly populated, I mean, we probably need to look at, I would, that's what we need to look at that.
I totally agree. And I have a question, when you say traffic counts, can you explain that a little bit more, like, what does that mean?
So our traffic department will go up, and they will set up a device, it's a little box, and it has a, it's like a wire, but it's kind of like a pressurized tube, and every time a vehicle passes by it, it gives a count. But it's also, it's able to calculate not only the weight of the tires, and then the timing of how close they pass together, and then it's able to determine what type of vehicle it was, or how heavy the vehicle was. So that information gets back to their engineer, and our engineer will make a determination after that.
Okay, also on that email, can you also send me like the thresholds? Like, when it would be warranted for a speed bump, please?
So here's a suggestion, when you look at it. You know, we do have a street maintenance program, right? Maybe you have to incorporate that into some kind of component. Maybe the street maintenance is all main, bigger roads, maybe, or highways, and maybe not residential?
Street maintenance does cover some residential.
Well, I mean, just something to look, I'm just not in favor of making a citizen, but that's expensive.
Sure, no, if you'd allow me, I'd like to elaborate on the traffic counts, the process. So typically, we'll go in there, and we'll study, there's a certain volume of vehicles, and a certain volume of them have to be speeding over thirty-five miles an hour, basically. So if they meet that criteria, that's typically what warrants it. And it's all spelled out in the ordinance, I'd be happy to send you a copy of that.
And what's the timeframe? Like, I know you say you put the, you know, the little thing there to measure, what's the timeframe? Like, was it like six months, two months, or how long, like, in order to get the metrics that you need to make a decision?
It usually is about a month and a half for us to do a full study. Part of the process requires neighborhood support. So there's a seventy-five percent criteria of the neighborhood that has to be in support of it. So that sometimes takes a little longer for people to get. So typically, if it runs smooth, it's about a month and a half.
One more comment, I'm sorry. It's just my mind going. And at minimum, that's some kind of communication that should be put onto the PD, that, you know, there's, you know, that's maybe an area they need to patrol or keep an eye on, because their presence shouldn't help deter you know, that type of driving.
Absolutely, we typically copy the PD every time we get one of those requests, so.
So as long as I've been a commissioner, and I've gotten a lot of these calls, and I've been out there. So there's a form they have to fill out, the resident, seventy-five percent of that neighborhood has to sign it. But when they find out that that speed bump is going to be in front of the neighbor's house, and they're going to lose that parking space, everything goes away.
Well, I would, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think most people would say, am I going to lose this parking? Or could I possibly lose a child that's in the street playing?
Well, I'm just letting you know from my experience, that's what normally happens. When the neighbor finds out that the speed bump's going to be there, because engineering does a study and says, these are where the speed bumps need to be, and it's your neighbor, they're like, no, we don't want speed bumps. I'm just giving you heads up, and then you know what I've experienced in the past.
Oh, and last question, because you were saying about, you know, you take about a month and a half. Because I know there were some streets in my district that requested a speed bump. And the thing is, they did it right in the middle of, you know, last year when it was COVID. And then that was one of the complaints, did you guys take into that consideration, any requests that you took last year for the speed bumps? Because you know, in the beginning of COVID, nobody was basically driving, you know what I mean? So did you take that into consideration?
You know, I want to say at one point in one request, and I'm recalling off the top of my head, we did have that as a factor, we said, would you like to wait? And I think the respondent requested to go ahead and take the counts.
Okay.
So I recall that in one case.
Can you also, because how many requests do you think you've gotten, like, within the past year or so?
We probably get, you know, five or six a month.
Okay. Can you, again, I don't mean to put work on you, but can you email me the ones, if you can separate that way? Can you email me the ones that are in my district, please?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You know, historically, similar to Ruben, somebody emails me or calls me, I tell them to email me, and then I forward it to the city, and then I also request the police department, hey, why don't you, you know, park on the street for a week or two down the road? Just to moderate speed and see if that works.
See, that is more of a temporary fix. I'd rather get to the real problem.
Right, I understand, but in Brazil, they call these mother-in-law bumps. Because not everybody loves a speed bump on their street. Uh, cause, cause not everybody loves a speed bump on their street. And that's why you need seventy-five percent of the people to do this. It, it, it isn't a, uh, a democracy of one or three percent, but a large percent.
That's okay, if I walk, I have to walk down on the street and knock on every door, it's okay, that's fine. I'm good.
Okay, well, uh, I think these are all good, uh, questions and a good discussion and, uh, you know, I think let's, uh, take a look at the ordinance, uh, to see what, you know, we can always bring the ordinance back and modify it. Uh, street maintenance has a, uh, four million dollar budget somewhere, more, more or less. And, you know, if we wanted to add money for speed bumps, we can do that at budget time. So, Rodrigo, why don't you continue with your presentation?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. Um, and so our street cleaning and maintenance division, uh, to date, uh, we've done, we've repaired nine hundred and ninety-eight, uh, potholes. Uh, we've repaired six thousand five hundred and thirty, uh, square yards. That's, that's the amount of, uh, it's measured in, in, in yards, the asphalt or, or caliche or other millions that we put on there. Uh, we repaired forty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-two linear feet of alleys. And we've cleaned, uh, ten thousand seventy-four linear feet, uh, of drain ditches and we've mowed a hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and forty.
Is there a schedule for those, for cleaning those drainage districts? Like, do we have a main, a yearly maintenance, do we do?
Yes, sir, year round, we have twenty-four of those and we have them on a, on a year run and we continue now. Again, that is similar to what we did with the, uh, with the, uh, brush, uh, online. We have a similar one, it's not being visited too often, I think it's a little bit complicated, it's working off of Google. Uh, so we're working to make improvements on those as well, so that we can also, uh, provide the citizens, uh, that wish to visit our website, what we've cleaned, uh, how much of it it was and what we're cleaning, uh, next. For example, this month, we're working on, on this particular drainage ditch and so on and so forth.
Okay, and another question, this relates to drainage. Um, when a, a citizen, like just earlier today, at some of the public comments, we had a, uh, one of my constituents called from behind BBC Banko, they're off Stewart Place and Champions. They called and they're saying how they've been having issues, there's still standing water there in the street and stuff like that. What is your response like, what do you guys do? What is the process when you get a call saying, hey, there's still water here in our streets? Um, we're, we're constantly getting flooded, because I even got one earlier this afternoon, uh, lady, uh, Ms. Cabasos off, um, Wilson and Russell. And she was saying how her, her ho- her homes, that street always gets flooded and she's contacted the city before and they haven't really done anything. What is the process? Like once you get a call from someone saying, hey, our streets are getting flooded, what do you guys do?
We create a work order for a street crew and we send either a supervisor or a street crew if, if we, uh, if we think we know what the problem is, the one, the one on Wilson, and I'm not sure if it was, if it was, uh, this citizen who called, but we had received a call on that one.
Okay.
And what it was, there is construction in that area right near the frontage and the underpass. And the construction company, even though our construction inspector had instructed them that there was weather coming, to remove those grass socks that they put, uh, on the inlets had not been removed. Our inspector went himself and he removed it and, and the water went through. So the standing water was because there was a blockage. And, and a lot of times that's, that's what it is, we, we find debris, uh, I mean, we found ice chairs, we've, believe it or not, in that area, we found the refrigerator once.
The Commissioner, also, just to share with you my experience, you know, I'll have somebody call me and I, I do the same as Commissioner Mesmar. Uh, we send it off to Dan and I document, I do an email, um, because you will get the citizen, or, or at least not all of them, but I've had some that will call me several times. And we've already explained the process, they've made contact, they've done everything they can to explain to them how, when and, you know, but citizens just don't happen. So then I get a call saying, well, I didn't do nothing about it. And I said, I did everything I could to get the situation resolved, right? Um, so, um, you know, that's why it's important, in my opinion, it's important that, yes, we take the calls and, and, you know, you mentioned, you know, it, your district. We, we voted in by district, but we should, you know, we, we're able to take care of, I, I take calls from any, any, any citizen origin, right? Not necessarily just my district. But, uh, and, and they'll tell me, well, I called, you know, Commissioner Puentes, I called Commissioner Mesmar, they didn't answer me. Then you find out, well, they, they've already talked to them, but they didn't get the answer they wanted. So they went on to the next commissioner, if that makes any sense. And I'm saying, it's not all, that's not always the case, but I, I've, I've found in my experience that if you give the guys an opportunity, the staff an opportunity to do it, they're gonna do everything in their power to, to, to get that done, you know, so, so.
No, I'm not doubting that you guys do your best, I mean, I, I know you guys do. Well, what I'm asking is, do you guys commu- like, for example, in that call that you got, and you found out what, do you go back and communicate? Do you talk to the person that made the call? Because a lot of times what I've seen is a lot of, a lot of the constituents that call in, all they want is communication. They, a lot of times they want to say, okay, look, they just want to be heard. So if you communicate with them and say, okay, this is what's going on, this is what happened, we did it, or hey, we weren't able to do this in this case and this is the reason why. Most of the time, not all the time, because you're right, you'll get some that are tercos and I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. But I would say, again, I have limited experience, it's my first one, but I would think that, you know, as long as most people get communication, that's all they want. But you guys do do that.
Absolutely, absolutely, Commissioner. When, when we have a, a, a return number, because sometimes they call us from a private number, unlisted number, uh, we try our best to, to get it back to them. When they, uh, send us an email or the email comes through, through the city commissioner administration, we respond to that email. Uh, even when they post on social media, Irma will usually, uh, forward it to us and say, hey, you know, do you have an answer for this one? Or has anybody checked this one out? I will, you know, look at it, create it from there and provide a response.
So I think, I think part of the most important part of our job, of what I, you know, I feel is, is, you know, we listen to it and, and we, we're listening to all these, these situations. And it, it's a whole bunch of stuff, but it's trying to improve the process, right? Through, through, through technology and giving the guys the tools that they need and, you know, that's very important, you know, uh, we'll, we'll start, soon start a budgeting process here in the next, what, month, I mean, or next few weeks? We start the, the new budgets. So that's when we really start to take it right, we as a group look at, you know, here's, here's how we prioritize and here's, how can we make the system better, more efficient? And, and, and we can't do it all at once, but, but we can, we can do it and, 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 and to, to, these guys, the fans, they bust their butt the last two years in drainage, right? Getting grants, getting stuff, I know I've seen it with Ninth, Thirteenth Street, Seventh Street, the Loop, you know, secluded acres and all those areas. Uh, but again, it's, 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 um, you know, taking all that into consideration, knowing that, you know, we have X amount of funds and how do we best spend them, uh, to prioritize and make it again, as efficient and give these guys the tools that they need. Whether it's software, technology, trucks, you know, whatever they need, you know? And that's, that, that process alone will help our constituents.
And historically, if I may say, people will call me, I'll say, send me an email so I can track it. They send me an email, the city has been a hundred percent responsive, always. The citizen may not like the answer, but the city has been a hundred percent responsive. And I'm dealing with one case back and forth now by the private property owner who doesn't take care of the property. And the result is silt and water and mud go into the street.
I had a question, well, something that, because it's something that I'm trying to do, again, this is specifically to my district and I did it like about a, what was it? Dan went with me, it was Dan and, um, Tim went with me to a neighborhood. And, um, it was a neighborhood and, uh, uh, began a circle and they had issues, um, with this, with the extending the sewer services and stuff like that. And what they, what Dan graciously did, um, with Tim, is he came out with me to the neighborhood. They explained it to the neighbor, they talked to them, we explained them, and it was honestly something that they didn't want to hear. That they were gonna have to pay out of their own funds and stuff like that. But by getting that information, it made them feel better and, and that would probably lessen some of the calls that we'd be getting or some of the complaints that we'd be getting. Would you, would you, or Andy, because I know Andy's usually a part of it, uh, would you be okay with that? Would you be okay accompanying me to say, like, one of these neighborhoods that continuously gets flooded? And maybe it has an issue that we can't address because like, uh, Richard said, maybe because, you know, we don't have the funds for it or something. Would you okay be going with me, having like a little neighborhood thing, talk to them and let them know, okay, this is what we've done, this is what we're trying to do? And just basically communicate with them? Would you guys be comfortable with that?
Absolutely, Commissioner, whatever we can do to better educate our citizens and better, uh, advise our citizens on, on what's going on and what are we doing. A lot of the work that we do is underground and sometimes when they don't see it right above it, they think it's not happening, but it is happening. We're flushing lines, we're removing debris, uh, we're, we're picking up brush, uh, we're unclogging inlets all the time. Uh, just to add to Commissioner Uribe's, as he was mentioning, I don't want to get into our MIS department, but we have a, a, an app that people can download and, and I haven't seen the numbers here lately, but I know that we get those requests as well. So there, they have the avenue of calling, of emailing, of, uh, putting it on social media, of using that app. We also have a report HGN at myharlingen.us email that we monitor in Public Works. They can send emails, they can send pictures, they can send requests that way. All those we monitor, we review and we respond. And, and so absolutely, if, if, if we need to go and remind them, in fact, we even have a QR code that they can scan and automatically send them to, to our website, so they can submit additional information.
Commissioner, during, during the last floods, Carlos, uh, Sanchez went with me. And there was probably good fifty, sixty people, we were in somebody's kitchen and he was demonstrating to them, you know, the water and the whole thing. And he, I mean, that was like late, I remember that was late, and, and we did that maybe three times in, 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 in these affected neighborhoods, right? So yeah, absolutely, if you call the staff, he'll definitely, they will definitely support you. But, I mean, we've been in people's houses, explaining to them, and then once they see it, then they understand, oh, okay, I get it. Because he, he can explain the engineering side of it. You know, uh, uh, I'm not an engineer, right? But, you know, you know, calling, uh, meetings together, groups together in a facility, being transparent and, and communicating with, with, with the citizens is absolutely important. But he took time, uh, uh, at night and brought his staff to somebody's kitchen and that was very impressive. In the middle of all the, you know.
Yeah, and that, that's what I want. So like Andy, like for example, that, um, neighborhood that's behind, because I was one of the neighborhoods I, during the campaign, I had a lot of issues. Um, the, the champion, around champions and masters. I'm sure, you know, would you be willing to go with me? And do that? Okay, cool, we'll set it up, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. They, they do a lot of that.
No, no, I'm glad.
And they do a lot of it that we don't even know about.
Right.
So I think it's not a, uh, it's, I think it's an easy ask.
Okay, great, because the point of it, because I know you guys do a lot, uh, plenty, but a lot of times the citizens, like, like Richard said, they're not aware of it. And I just want them to be aware of the stuff that you're doing in the background, that they're not forgotten, that you are working for them. And like I said, if they know that, they feel that, you know, they're being heard, then I think that would make, uh, honestly, your life a little bit easier because you wouldn't be getting all these complaints, because once they understand what's going on, I'm hoping that they'll be, okay, okay, they're listening to me and they're trying. That's what they want, most people. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next slide.
Yes, sir, uh, street maintenance, street cleaning division, uh, we're responsible maintaining city streets, again, alleys, drainage, uh, the right-of-way cleaning. And thus far, to date, up, up until April, actually, this, this, this numbers are from April, uh, we've repaired nine hundred and ninety-eight, uh, potholes, six hundred, I'm sorry, six thousand five hundred and thirty square yards, uh, street repairs. Uh, we repaired forty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-two linear feet of alleys. And, and again, we've cleaned and, and, uh, mowed, uh, and used the excavator, uh, for ten thousand, uh, plus linear feet. And we've mowed, uh, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand linear feet of, of.
Last question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Uh, right here, perfect, street signs. What's the process in getting a street sign? Because I noticed, like even in my neighborhood, there was an area, because I live on Hickory Hills, and there was an area where a lot of people were dumping their stuff. And then eventually, like, I, I noticed people were just throwing everything in there, then eventually you guys did, you put up a sign and it said, no dumping. And that was great, and then honestly, that's reduced everything. There's another neighborhood in, uh, my district, on Vista Verde, and there's an area where you drive in and these, it's literally right when you drive in and there's like all this dumping, people just do exactly what is going on in my neighborhood was, it's happening there, and I've already had some, uh, people call me and say, sir, is there anything you can do? So what's the process for that?
Again, just giving us a call, uh, typically we'll, we'll get, uh, code compliance involved to make sure that they have a report. They like to track and see illegal dumping, it helps with their benchmarks, their statistics. Uh, they will also sometimes go through the trash and try and find, uh, an owner, they talk to the residents. Did you see anybody? Some residents have provided us with, uh, video from their security, uh, cameras around the house, uh, some witness video to some of the events. And then once they take care of that, then they send that report to us and then we will generate that work order and we'll, we'll put a sign there if it, uh, if there's a space. If we have some right-of-way, we'll definitely put a sign. But just to let you know, in, in some cases, and, and that's great that that worked there on Hick Hill, but we also have found that, you know, people call us, put a sign, put a sign, we put the sign. And then the people seem like, oh, okay, well, let's see how much we can get away with, and that, that happens too. Uh, we are getting, uh, additional cameras, well, maybe I shouldn't say it, but additional cameras that we can place and, and hopefully catch some of those, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we, we, they were not approved, we didn't get them.
So the one in Vista Verde, um, one of my friends lived on the street, uh, last month I had a, talked to Manny and had Manny put up the camera, so I don't know the end result, I haven't followed up with Manny, but I did talk to Manny about that issue, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're really good about that as, as well. Um, and so we have done, uh, Twenty-Seventh Street, uh, replaced Twenty-Seventh Street signs. Uh, these are just signs that fade out or get bent or torn off or, you know, sometimes we have accidents and they get torn down as well. Uh, we have, uh, replaced forty-two regulatory signs and twenty-seven warning signs. Our street sweepers have swept two thousand, uh, one hundred and forty-nine, uh, miles of street and again, that process continues. Uh, and we're hoping to increase that, um, now that we're getting additional equipment. Stripping of roads, eight thousand three hundred and sixty linear feet, uh, and one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine crosswalks. And then we've done some, uh, caliche repair, thirteen thousand, uh, linear feet on, on different roads, alleys, mostly alleyways, that we're doing any caliche repair on that. Roadside ditches, this is just some of what we've been able to do in-house. Uh, and, and the first picture here is, uh, of Dilworth Street. Uh, there was when it, when it hits the, I guess going north from Frontage, north on Dilworth, at the end of it, there's that greatest canal. There was a collapse on that pipe, uh, last year and there was a lot, a lot of water that was pounding, we were able to replace that pipe, that outfall, and then we regraded the entire ditch and, uh, this is one of the sites that, that we often visit, uh, when we do have rains and it has been working great. Uh, this is Graham Road and Vista de Sol, and we've also done Tucker Road, phase one, we're hoping to start, uh, phase two. And again, this are, this are projects that we do in-house. Uh, last year, just as a point of, of reference, we did Beckham, Halpin, uh, with the Hughes Road, or half of Hughes Road, there was some development on the other side. Uh, and then we occasionally do, uh, whatever we can to, to, any roads that we see that are clogged, we'll go in there and flush the culverts and, and so on and so forth to improve, uh, drainage. Uh, this is the, the mowing that we've done, again, it's the same numbers as, as shown in the other one, but I wanted to illustrate with some of the pictures, the equipment that we use out there, these are the pictures that we're gonna be putting on our website to let the people know what we did. When, when we say slope mower, uh, they'll have a picture that represents that so that they know what's out there. And, and if they want to call us out on anything, if we happen to put, you know, the excavator, which is this one here, and they're like, no, it was a mower, then, you know, at least they know and they recognize what we're trying to do. The excavator is used pretty much to clear at the bottom and this one, it's, it's a mower, so it, and it mows the grass. Uh, these are pending in-house projects that we're, we're hoping to tackle here soon. Uh, and this list, you know, just keeps adding on, we're always looking for, for other improvements that we can do in-house with our, with our staff. Uh, so we're looking in downtown to improve the West Jackson Commerce and, and Fillmore. Uh, we've been taking some, uh, video, uh, of some of those inlets and we've been trying to identify additional ones uh, that we can provide some relief there. Phase two of Palm Boulevard, which is a middle, uh, Vella Middle School project, and I know Andy's gonna cover a little bit on that, a, a little bit later. But so far in front of the school, we've already, um, set sidewalk there and we're hoping to finish it all the way to Business Eighty-three and then, uh, connect it back to the neighborhoods, uh, that are in the back, or I guess it would be south and, and, and north. Um, Adams Crossing Retention Pond, we're gonna be doing some improvements. We were hoping to get that project started today, but because we had some rain yesterday, uh, it's, it's a little bit too wet still for equipment to go in there. Uh, so as soon as we can, uh, get that ground a little bit stabilized to hold our equipment, we're gonna go in there and make some improvements to, to that retention pond. Uh, I know that crews were out there today and, and all they did was, they were starting to set their markers to see where they're gonna cut and they're going to, uh, make the improvement. But that's, that's all we could do thus far. Uh, the phase two roadside ditch on South Tucker Road, that's a, another improvement that we're gonna do in-house. Uh, Sam Houston and Road Road Drainage, that's one that we actually had planned to do, uh, after the Adams, but because of, of the rain that happened, we were able to get in, in this one. And, and this area right here is right behind that, um, Treasure Hills Plaza, Shipley's Donut area. Uh, it is a private, um, drain ditch that goes all the way to the Arroyo, we were able to get permission from the owner. Uh, and we're out there, uh, all day today, we'll probably be out there the rest of the week. Uh, there is a lot of stuff, uh, uh, that we're taking out of there. And we're hoping to develop a great relationship with that owner, uh, to allow us to better help them, uh, keep it clean and allow that water to flow from Sam Houston, uh, all the way out. And of course Hick Hill and King Fisher Court, uh, there is a retention pond over there, that's also, uh, it's in, in, in need of some, some attention there. We're trying to get permission to be out, most of it is inside the city, but some of the access points are in the county, uh, so we need to get out there, that's the one that's on top.
Are you familiar with, there's like a huge pond, like if you go off Wilson and then like right off in the corner of Wilson and the Frontage, there's like, um, a huge pond. And it's, uh, it's really, really big pond, um, it's like, there's like a little mobile home park. And it's, it's really, really big pond, it's like, there's like a little mobile home park, it's twenty-six oh one.
Is that the Oasis?
I'm sorry?
The Oasis?
No, 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 it's more toward the expressway. And then it's like, the address is like, I think twenty...
Okay.
Yes, like, yeah, yeah, exactly, there's this huge, huge pond there. Is that private property, or is that city property, do you know?
I believe that's the park, right? That's part of the park?
The...
Part of the RV? Oh, part of the, it belongs to the trailer park.
Okay, because it's a huge, huge pond, and I know last time when we had the flood, that area drains a lot. Would it be possible, like, to be an in-house project? Again, I'm just throwing ideas out there, like to maybe dredge that up, to make it get more water? Would that be too expensive?
Yeah, we actually don't have dredging equipment to go in there, to take it out. The reason we were able to do it on Hick Hill was because it was dry at the time. And I mean, and we really did just a minimal surface. What we wanted to do is take a little bit of the dirt and build up the burn that had fallen during the twenty eighteen flood. And so we took literally like four inches, six inches at the most, and it was just to move it there, to kind of build up the dirt burn that was already there, but it had caved in. But dredging, dredging, I mean, we use scrapers, we didn't use dredging equipment, we don't have that type of equipment, it would be too soft. I mean, it's something we can look at, definitely, but we got to have the right equipment to be able to do it.
That's the private pond that a couple of years ago, when we had the summer drought, they wanted us to fill it up with water, but we couldn't because it's a private pond.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, it's private. And this is taken from our website Drainage Improvements Project list, that's on there already. And again, over the past twelve years, the city has secured funding for twenty-eight projects that are listed here. And this one, if you go to our website, the reason that they're blue is because they're all hyperlinked. You can click on any one of those projects, and it'll forward you to more detailed, more information of what the project did. This is just kind of like a quick overview of those twenty-eight projects. And these twenty-eight projects were a total of thirty million one hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-five. And part of the big reason that the city was able to leverage those local funds and secure federal funds and grants through like FEMA, the Texas Water Development Board, and then some partnerships with IBWC, Drainage District Number Five, Irrigation District Number One. And the second chart of that here is what we're hoping to do next. And I know that Andy might, or I know Carlos is probably going to elaborate a little bit more on that, but it's just part of the problem that I wanted to show. This next slide, I guess, to kind of illustrate some of the obstacles that we see out there. I don't have like, you know, specific, specific roads, or I'm not trying to call anybody out, but just some of the stuff we see in our neighborhoods, this is around here in the downtown area, Polk, Thirteenth Street. And just to show and to illustrate, when citizens cut their clippings, this is why we don't want the clippings on the street, that people blow them on the street, they will accumulate and cause something like this. And I mean, you would think it's just grass, but in minutes, as water is coming in, it's completely blocked, and then we have to open it and allow that water to go through. This is another image, and this is just a curb, the water is supposed to be going in this direction, they cut the grass, I don't know if you can see it very clear here, but this is just grass clippings, and it stopped the entire water from going. I mean, and this is something that it's just, with your foot, you can remove it and take it off. Unfortunately, we can't drive everywhere to do this type of stuff, and this is the type of stuff that we want to help and we want to educate our citizens. The reason why we ask them not to throw the clippings on the street or blow them onto the street, because this is what it causes. And it just holds water in from here, I mean, I know in the downtown, and I think, I don't know if Bill is here, but him and I in this area here, we are constantly blocking, this is Bamburan Street. And, you know, this is where all the brush leaves just come in, and they stay on those inlets, and it causes this. And this is actually not that bad, we've seen it where half of the street is covered, and all we do is take a small rake, rake the leaves out, and the water gushes through. So the system works, but the system has to be, I know that for something like this, we are looking at innovative ways to maybe make our inlet covers different angles. We've tried cutting tube, instead of it being square, being round, to allow the leaves to go in. It just doesn't happen. I know that sometimes here, we've had something as simple as a shopping bag that they drop on the street, it floats over, once it gets there, it gets suction, and it completely blocks it. This is more in the other areas, again, I'm not calling anybody out, but this is in the areas where we don't have curb and gutter, and as you can see here, there is area to place the brush, but we continue to see that they place it right where the culvert is, and this is just the blockage. This is a pile of wood, old wood, maybe they took apart a furniture, I'm not sure what it was, but it is right in, it was placed there, it wasn't thrown there, it didn't float there, it was placed there. And this is some other areas where they're just placing it, I mean, this is their driveway to get to their property, and they're putting it on both sides of the culverts. This is a recent one that just happened, that they called us, they called us that the water was not flowing, and when we went out there, this is what we saw. This is a piece of, it's not gypsum board, it's another type of board that they use for construction. Somebody just threw it in the inlet, and it was completely blocking one of the areas downtown. And so it looks the same as concrete, we couldn't tell with the water, but once we finally got in there and we kind of poked at it and pressure washed it, we found out what it was, we were able to remove it, and the water moved. And some of the other images that I didn't place on here, I mean, we've taken one-by-twelves, igloo, ice chests, all sorts of things, that really, I mean, I don't know what it is, maybe people think, second-guess it, and if in doubt, throw it in the drain, it doesn't go in the drain, it causes a lot of havoc for what we're trying to do. And up to that is where I'm going to allow Andy to speak a little bit more on the engineering portion of this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, and thank you. Thank you to your department and all the men and women of your, on your staff. As we've gone through here, it's a reminder of how much work they do, a lot of, you know, all this stuff is taken for granted, but it's a huge job. And it's not taken for granted when the garbage isn't picked up, or when the brush isn't picked up, but when it is, you know, you just expect it to be there. And so we appreciate everything that you guys in your department do for all of our citizens, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner, my name is Andy Vigstall, I'm your city engineer. I appreciate you allowing us the time to present some of the roles, responsibilities, and projects we have going on in our department tonight. So I just wanted to touch on a few of our roles as the engineering department. We do a lot of grant writing, grant management, you've probably heard, we've been successful in getting some grants here recently for drainage, so a big part of that goes to not only my staff, but the administration of the city for, you know, keeping us focused on that, and, you know, trying to get those, so, you know, that's certainly one of the aspects of what we do. Flood plan administration, as the city engineer, I serve as the flood plan administrator, which, you know, interacts with our national flood insurance participation. We do, as a participant, as a city, get a discount on flood insurance policies due to our participation in that program. So we also do right-of-way management, you know, things going on within the right-of-way, excavation permits, that sort of thing, when people are installing utilities, we typically issue a permit on that. We do some in-house design for projects, currently working on the next street improvement project, amongst a few other projects, so that's another one of our roles. We field a lot of citizen requests, we have a lot of people contacting us and requesting things or bringing things to our attention, and we do our best to give them excellent customer service and address their issues. We work as development liaisons, you know, trying to help bring development in, make it successful, and, you know, bring new developments online. We do departmental support, other departments will ask us for help with their projects, or, you know, just even to just bounce some ideas off of us, we're there to help all the departments within the city. We also work in the emergency operations, the emergency operations committee. My particular role is on the planning, planning side of it, but all of us are classified as first responders, so we all pitch in, you know, we're good with maps and numbers, so anywhere we can help with that, we're here to help. I put in staff management, because I, certainly part of what I do, I manage a small staff of five. External affairs is really, you know, we deal with a lot of extra jurisdictional agencies, such as Tech dot, USIBWC, GLO, Tedom, FEMA, so we interface with them, and typically, they're technical staff. Project management, we manage the construction projects going on in the city. That's typically where the front line, and we ensure that the projects are being delivered. We develop standards for the city, it's part of the, you know, development and upkeep of the city. We develop certain standards for improvements. We do records research, you know, when sometimes there'll be, you know, some information that needs to be looked up, and we have a lot of technical depth in that area, so. Street closings, we handle, we field a lot of street closing requests. And development review, we're part of that process, so as new developments get submitted, we perform reviews on them. Compliance assistance, as far as our, the city's permits, the MS Four and stormwater permitting, and we also do inspections. So those are a few of the roles we have in our department. Some of our major responsibilities are, we do have an annual street improvement project, and that's kind of ours to develop, manage, and construct. Community development block grant projects that come out, we propose annual projects for that as well. Any capital improvement project management, as far as stormwater or drainage falls under our umbrella. Again, the development reviews, we do reviews on developments that are being proposed in the city. We perform traffic studies, make recommendations off of those. We manage the speed hump program, which we talked about a little bit earlier, and we review update ordinances as needed. And I also serve as a representative on the BPAC, which is through the Metrop, the Lower Rio Grande Valley MPO, which is a metropolis, metropolis planning organization, and this is their bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, so. Those are some of our key responsibilities, so I'm going to jump into some of the projects we've got going on right now. This one's kind of wrapping up, it's the Twenty-Twenty Street Improvement Program Project. I call it the SIP, just to kind of simplify things, so. This project did three and a half miles of roads. We took Traxler Road, which was a unpaved gravel road, and paved it between the adjoining neighborhood and the Frontage Road. Countryside and Sunnyside were two cul-de-sacs that were out on Altus-Palmes that got milled and overlaid. Granada Street saw mill and overlay, Markowski got the pavement removed and reworked some of the base material to provide a little strength on that street. We've got the bus barn over there, plus our public works yard is off of Markowski, so a lot of heavy traffic over there. Fair Park, Jefferson Avenue, you know, the first part of Destination Park, and this one just timed up just right, and, you know, we got that repaved, restriped right as the park was opening, so that was a real success. And another success, all the streets were a success on this project. Hayne Avenue, we got that one timed right between the spring break time, so we did, you know, good on that. Treasure Hills Boulevard as well, so. That project is right at one million four hundred seventy-eight thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and eleven cents. Most of it, again, was milling overlay, some of it was reconstruction, and that project is on time and on budget. So we're very happy with that one. The next project I kind of wanted to touch on was the Ninth and Thirteenth Street Project, which is a...
Excuse me, so it's about, just doing simple math, it's about four hundred thousand dollars a mile to do a street. Thirteen miles times...
Correct, so, yeah, correct.
But if they have to remove it and put base, I think it's even more than that, right?
So, yeah, that's right, there was a few different things we did on those, but...
It's extremely expensive.
Roads are expensive, drainage is even more expensive, so. But this Ninth and Thirteenth Street Project, it really came together well. I really like this picture, if you look in the background here, this little pipe right here is the one that's getting replaced with this big one, so, you know, just by looking at the picture, you can kind of get a sense of the scale of the improvements that are occurring out there. And this project was, we've actually received a couple grants on this one. So the first grant came through FEMA, which is administered through the Texas Department of Emergency Management, who is Tedom. So they got the ball rolling, and then to help us with our local match, the Texas Water Development Board provided an additional grant. So this is about a, with Design Services, about two-point-eight million dollar project, and I think we paid, we'll be paying around three hundred and twenty thousand, so. You know, between the grants, it really, you know, was a great project, so. That one is currently under construction. Again, it was a two-phase project through Tedom, there was a design phase and then a construction phase. It's about five thousand seven hundred linear feet of pipe altogether, varying size. Most of it is forty-eight inch, there's some sixty-inch, and then the smaller laterals were eighteen inches or bigger, so. A lot of new pipe, twenty-eight junction boxes, forty-eight inlets, so we replaced a lot of infrastructure on this one. And again, through the grants, it was just an outstanding project, so. They are, this project did include a boring under Tyler, I don't know if anyone knew that, but it went under the street, and it's going well. So the project's pretty close to being on time, we might be behind a few weeks, but I believe generally, it's on time, and it is on budget. Dixieland Ditch Project, this was a unique project that we had originally applied for a similar FEMA grant for, and we were able to ultimately find a partnership between Cameron County Drainage District Number Five and the Harlingen Irrigation District to perform the work. So it really came together well in that aspect. FEMA, Tedom grants can typically take, you know, years before you know if they're moving forward with them, so. This one, you know... moving forward with them, so, uh, this one, you know, uh, we recognized that, that we needed to move on it, and, uh, we were able to find a way to, uh, to get it done, uh, more, more quickly, and, uh, actually, the cost, uh, is, is significantly lower by using the interlocal agreement, so, uh, we've got, uh, good partnership with the irrigation district who's performing the work, and they, they, they do give work, so, uh, we're, we're happy to have them on board, and those, those are seeing upgraded, uh, crossings at, uh, Garrett, which, which, that's where they're at right now, um, Haverford Boulevard saw an upgraded crossing, and, uh, Bothwell as well, so, uh, that, that's, that's gonna help that system quite a bit. And then the, uh, transportation alternatives set aside, which are the sidewalks that are going in now, um, uh, that, that's really two projects, so, uh, we, we've got, uh, project number one is the one in construction, the one everyone's seeing around town, uh, that one's managed through Tech Dot, uh, and it touches, uh, portions of I sixty-nine frontage, um, uh, the northbound frontage, uh, generally from down around by, uh, Harlingen Medical up to Wilson. Um, Seventy-seven Sunshine Strip, uh, is seeing, uh, new improvements, kind of on the northern side. Harrison and Tyler are seeing new sidewalks, um, as well, so, um, there's, there's a little bit of, uh, of, of sidewalk on, on, uh, on Fair Park as well, so. Thirteen point one six miles, uh, the total project cost was, uh, five million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars, uh, but the city, uh, again, that, that, that was a grant through Federal Highway, which is administered through Tech Dot, and, uh, I, I believe our cost was somewhere in the eighty-five thousand dollar range for that project, so, a lot of great sidewalks, a lot of much-needed sidewalks, and, uh, again, tremendous savings in getting those installed, uh, due to our partnerships with, with, uh, Tech Dot, so. Uh, the second project is, is currently in design, it is a one point four four mile stretch of sidewalk on Loop Four Ninety-Nine, uh, it goes from Rio Honda Road to, uh, to Harrison, uh, it'll be on the, uh, the west side of, of the loop there, and, uh, we're looking at an August letting, so hopefully that should be under construction here, uh, in the next, uh, next few months. Um, and that one, the, the estimated cost is, uh, five hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven, uh, which, uh, which the city, I believe, will, will, will pay about twenty percent of that, so. Uh, again, a lot of good sidewalks, uh, we've been able to partner with people to, to bring them in at, at, uh, really good, uh, uh, savings to the citizens, so. Um, another one is the Vela Middle School, um, uh, sidewalk improvement project, um, so we have partnered with HCISD, um, to, uh, to, uh, to kinda build the, the sidewalk and the bridge there, uh, which will connect, uh, like Mr. Davila said, ultimately, from, from, uh, Business Eighty-three down to the, uh, uh, Rose Garden Mobile Home Park, uh, which is the, uh, currently the, the southern kind of developed area there, uh, adjacent to Vela. So, um, that project has, uh, I guess the key feature is, is a, a new pedestrian bridge, and I just wanted to point out, this is not the actual bridge, this is just a, kinda the concept, it's, it's not, it's not in the ground yet, but this is, uh, similar to what it'll look like. Um, it's a hundred and twenty feet in length, six feet in width, and it will go from the top of the bank to the top of the bank, there won't be any, any intermediate support, so, uh, that one is currently being designed, um, by the, the company that will fabricate it, so. Um, and then the sidewalks that go into Vela, uh, they'll be, uh, a little over half a mile, uh, to connect those, so. Um, those are some of the major projects we have going on right now, uh, we do have some in the pipeline, uh, coming up, uh, Texas Water Development Board, uh, flood study, uh, it's probably our, uh, our, uh, you know, one that we, coming up next is, uh, uh, it's a six hundred, uh, six point two million dollar flood study of, of, uh, of the area, kinda central to Harlingen, uh, there'll be a, a lot of aspects in it that will, uh, you know, study the drainage, we'll, we'll get a lot of useful information out of this study, so, um, uh, that's, that's probably the next one coming online. Uh, the 2021 Street Improvement Project, um, that one, as well, is, uh, we're hopeful to get that out here by the end of the month, um, and that one, uh, I should've included a graphic, I don't have one on there, but, uh, uh, again, it's, it's, it's similar to the one, uh, we did here, uh, last year, so. And then we have a few other drainage grants, uh, that we're working on, the, uh, the Jefferson Street one has been moved to an approved status, so we're moving forward with that one, um, uh, here, uh, should be going out to, uh, to, to, uh, look for Design Services, uh, here in the next, uh, couple weeks, and then the, uh, Business Seventy-seven, Twenty-First Street and Fifth and Seventh Street, uh, we're still working with FEMA to, to get those shored up, so. And then, uh, you know, we talked about the American Rescue Ass, uh, Rescue Plan Act of 2021, so, uh, that's really, just wanted to touch on a few of our, uh, roles, responsibilities, projects, and, uh, kinda, kinda, you know, just kinda introduce ourself and, and let you know what we do. Again, we have a, a, a staff, uh, I'm the city engineer, uh, we have a deputy city engineer position, um, we also have the assistant city engineer, Kimberly Salinas, our project control officer who does the inspections, Oscar Olvea, and we have, uh, two engineering technicians, Brent Santian and Julian Cortez, so. Um, that is our staff, and that's our presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you for everything you do for us, Andy.
Sure, thank you.
All right, Andy, thank you, thank you to you and your team for all the work that you do, and, and you didn't get the subdivisions tonight, but you have a lot, you have a lot of work, uh, related to those as well, so we thank, thank you for all that you guys are doing. All right, question, that concludes item four.
Mayor, I know that Ron had submitted a citizens communication on item number four, I don't know, he's in the room.
I already spoke on that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, item number, uh, so the, uh, next item is, uh, item number six, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow food truck in general retail district located at eighteen-eleven West Jefferson Avenue, paragon legal description of Lot E, Block One, Central Freight Line subdivision number one, applicant is Lynn Zanka.
Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening, uh, this is our first, uh, food truck, uh, park project, um, if you remember, the zoning ordinance was amended a few months ago to have a process in place for this, so now we have, the first one is on, on Jefferson Avenue, eighteen-eleven West Jefferson, the property is subdivided and is on commercial, and this is the property where it's proposed, uh, I think it was a central line, central freight lines, uh, at one point, and so the property is for sale and, and the applicants are, have a purchase contract on the property. And this is the proposed, uh, uh, food truck park, uh, this is the existing building, this is where they're proposing to have the restrooms, an open air bar, the blue are the proposed food trucks, a concert stage here and here, parking in the front, on the sides and in the back, and, uh, volleyball and, and a dog park in the rear. So it's gonna be a nice, a mixed of uses, uh, should be nice entertainment for the Harlingen residents, uh, year, year round. This is the aerial photo, uh, that shows the existing building, they're proposed, they got permission from this property owner for off-site parking, which allowed them more people, uh, for their capacity, so there's, uh, forty-five parking spaces here and, uh, seventy-four parking spaces proposed onsite. That's the off-site parking, uh, staff recommends approval, uh, maximum occupancy will be four hundred and sixteen people, based on the hundred and nineteen parking spaces proposed, uh, must maintain the hundred and nineteen parking spaces at all time, must provide the required restroom facilities, uh, for the four hundred and sixteen people, which is three commodes for men and five commodes for, uh, women, must provide adequate lighting to light up the entire property, video surveillance, a thirty-day retention, must comply with the noise ordinance, must provide an audit after twelve months of operations for the last one month by a licensed auditor to show that more than fifty percent of the total sales are food-related, uh, must comply with the TABC requirements and, uh, requirements from all the different, uh, departments. This went before the planning and zoning commission, uh, on May twenty-sixth, we sent notices to, uh, all property owners within one thousand feet, uh, and no one spoke in opposition to the S, S U P request, uh, so the commission recommended approval unanimously with a five-to-zero vote.
Excuse me, Mayor, Commissioner O'Leary stepped out because of a conflict of interest, so he'll be, um, in the executive room until this item is, um, completely discussed.
Okay, all right, so, uh, that's, very good. Item, uh, so, uh, we have a public hearing, we nobody's signed up for the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
I'll, I'll call it anyway, is there, all right, public hearing, open the public hearing, does anyone like to speak for or against this S U P, you gonna speak for or against the S U P, Mr. LaZado?
Uh, probably neutral on it, Your Honor. I think my question's real simple, uh, the packet indicates that Thursday through Saturday, it can remain, remain open till two AM, is that correct?
Yes, they gave us a hours of operation that we put in the, in the ordinance, correct.
So it's midnight on the other days?
Yes. Hours of operation is, uh, Wednesday through Saturday from six, from six PM to two AM, and Sundays from six PM to twelve AM, and closed on Mondays and Tuesdays.
Well, I think we got it straight, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, anyone else like to speak for or against this S U P? Hearing now on closing public hearing, I got item B, which is consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow food truck in the general retail district located eighteen-eleven Jefferson Avenue, paragon legal description of Lot E, Block One, Central Freight Line subdivision number one, ask the city attorney to please read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Lynn Zanka to allow food truck park in a general retail district located eighteen-eleven West Jefferson Avenue and dealing with related matters.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. This is a, a fun project, a really, I think it could be a great addition to our city, and, uh, thanks to everybody for paving the way to make this happen, and congratulations to, uh, Mr. Zanka, uh, and, uh, so, this oughta be a, a good entertainment venue for our, our, our folks. Item seven, consideration possible action to prepare and approve an art program for the intersections along Jackson Street.
Mayor, members of the commission, um, on May twenty-first, the, uh, DID Board of Directors met and agreed to recommend to the commission to approve, um, installation of artwork, they don't have what the, uh, artwork concept is going to be like, but they want to try to get that approved before they expend, uh, more resources on it, uh, resources on it. Um, they do have the foundation in place already, so that whatever we do decide, uh, could be easily installed. Um, the one thing that we will have to do is get with engineering and with legal to make sure that whatever concept we put up will not block any traffic or, uh, sight of view, so, the board recommended approval, so we are recommending approval of the concept as well, we will come back once the project is finalized and ask for recommendations and approval from the commission on the exact design. Probably should've waited till you got back, commission, before I started my presentation, I'm sorry.
All right, is there a, I think, are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item A, consideration possible action to approve the construction of a public restroom in the downtown improvement district area.
Uh, Mayor, again, on May twenty-first, the DID Board met and recommended, and approved the recommendation to the city commission to look into the possibility of installing a bathroom facility in the DID area. Uh, we've discussed this with the city manager, uh, we don't have a location yet, but one of the tasks that I've been assigned is, if the commission approves this, to look for a location within the DID area to actually get this done. Uh, we will also look at allocating any funding, uh, for this project, the DID Board members did get eighty-six signatures from the, uh, DID businesses in favor and a support of the project, so we are recommending that you authorize staff to move forward and, and to looking into a possibility of bathrooms in the DID area.
Okay, any, any questions about this? Is there a motion to, this is a project that's kinda been out there for a long, long time, and, uh, just-
It has, Mayor, but I think, I think we get the direction-
Downtown improvement board is-
Yeah, we don't wanna be the streets of San Francisco.
All right, okay, yeah, is there a motion?
Is it a, is it moved?
Okay, that was a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. And item nine, consideration possible action, uh, to approve the installation of lighting and electrical connections along Centennial Park.
Uh, Mayor, again, on May twenty-first, the DID Board of Directors met and approved, uh, the concept of lighting up, um, a Centennial Park, uh, they have spoken about getting events hosted in that location, but they can't do it in the evenings because of lack of electricity and lighting, so we have looked at a concept of getting that done, uh, the parks director is here also to answer questions about exactly how that would work, uh, so we are recommending authorization of the concept to begin the process of providing electricity and lighting in the, uh, Centennial Park area.
Okay, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. All right, thank you, Jay. Item ten, consideration of possible action to approve and authorize, city manager signed an interlocal agreement with the City of Harlingen and HCISD for the use of two school buses for the Parks and Recreation 2021 Summer Recreation Program.
Yes, Mayor, secret commission, um, this interlocal here, um, it's a, it to allow us to use, uh, two, um, HCISD buses for our summer program, uh, we do this every year, and, um, one thing that I, uh, legal has, has reviewed it, they made some changes, um, the school district has approved the changes, and the corrected, uh, version is, is, um, in front of you, uh, what we did was, we took out the, um, indemnification clause, and we created a liability clause, um, and we got this wording from, uh, from legal as well, so, staff recommends approval.
So we have liability, or we're taking liability, or?
I, I think each, is that correct, Allison, that we're, each, each, um, entity is, is, um, having their own liability?
The city is going to insure the buses for the, for the time period and for the duration of its u- of their use, and the buses will be insured against damage and liability.
But in, uh, in the event of a crash or, uh, with the kids?
That'll also be covered under our, our certificate of insurance from TML.
And, and, but before we had, we didn't have that, we had to do that?
Well, a lot, in, in years past, we had the indemnification where we, I guess, indemnified, uh, they indemnified us, is that correct? Or we indemnified this-
No, what they wanted was for the city to indemnify them. And I, excuse me, and I struck that provision and instead provided for liability insurance covering the bus and the damages.
Thank you.
In the event it's needed.
So one other thing we do is we do pay for the, uh, use of the bus, um, and that is budgeted, near, uh, annual budget.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consideration- Item eleven, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution accepting the anticipated Federal Aviation Administration grant three dash forty-eight dash oh-one-oh-one dash oh-six-seven dash twenty-one in the amount of two million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Contention upon the receipt of the F A A grant.
Mayor, I just want to note, he was cleanly shaven when we started the meeting.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Just like to tell you that, that the Airport Staff Airport Board has made significant progress on extending the longest runway in the Rio Grande Valley at the Valleys Airport. Over the last year and a half, there was a significant amount of work that went into getting to this point. The cost benefit analysis that we had to prove to the F A A, an environmental assessment that had to be completed, the finding of no significant impact as well. We're currently in the land acquisition phase that we'll discuss later, and this grant will actually fund the design, planning and design of this project as well as pay for property to, that we have to acquire in order to, to extend the runway. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right, well, this is an extremely exciting step forward towards accomplishing the, the goal of extending the runway. Rick Kelly, Valley March, started a very nice article about the benefits of this, and it's kind of a big deal. So anybody want to accept money from the F A A?
Motion for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Marv, I'm going to go ahead and take up since, I don't think, item nineteen is the companion to this, which is the consideration of possible action regarding the purchase of real property from Valley International Airport runway one-seven R slash thirty-five L extension project.
Yes, this is actually three landowners that we had, had negotiated with a price. The total is seventy-two acre, a little over seventy-two acres at eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars total. And what we want to do is purchase that property. It requires approval from the city commission according to the charter. The airport board had made recommendations on May twenty-eighth for the city commission to authorize the purchase of that property.
And the F A A grant that we just approved?
That's correct.
It pays, that we just approved has a component of that that pays for this, and the F A A has already approved the purchase and the price?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think the motion for approval.
This is the next, next step in accomplishing the goal.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, keep, motion carries. All right, thank you, Marv.
Thank you.
Item twelve is a consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. This is budget amendment number three that allocates funds.
Hold on, Robert. Sorry. Do we need to remove this from the tables, Mayor? Has that been tabled the last time?
That's right. Sorry about that.
Yes, we need a motion to.
Motion to remove this item twelve from the table?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Go ahead, Robert.
I think we're still waiting on.
Oh.
Were we waiting on information? Didn't you request anything?
It's on fourteen.
Well.
Is it, which one?
Item twelve.
Well, this is on the budget, not.
The budget amendment number three. We, we did modify it from the last time we were here, so we did remove the expenditures for the, the coronavirus relief. We are going to recognize the revenue for it, but defer recording the expenditures until we have the workshop and receive further guidance.
Right now, okay, so we're just going to take it, take it and discuss it. All right.
This, we can, we can approve these three grant items, revenue and two expenditures, and, and the, we can add the expenditure portion on the second reading after the workshop.
And then the workshop is going to cover the?
The, is, the workshop is specifically to talk about the allowable uses of the American Rescue Plan funding, the ten point nine million. All we're asking you to do right now is receive the funds so we can account for it. We, we're not accounting for any expenditures in this budget amendment. So that'll be discussed at the workshop. The city council will give staff direction.
So we're not going to spend any money or anything, we're just going to receive it?
This is just to receive, because we received it on May twenty.
We're just going to account it now. The one point four or five million, that's for additional COVID testing and COVID vaccination. Those, we have been having the clinics out at the convention center. We want to cover those expenses. That's a different grant.
Right.
The ten point nine million associated with the American Rescue Plan, all we're doing is receiving the funds. We're going to talk about how we can use the money on Friday, and then we can bring it back for another budget amendment or before the second reading, once we get direction from the city council of how to expend those funds. In other words, we're not expending any of that money. All he put down in, underneath the ten point nine is allowable uses. That's it.
Right.
There are no expenses associated with it.
And those will be further discussed on Friday on, on the types of uses that it can be used for?
This Friday, right?
This Friday, yes, sir.
And, and we can't take action on Friday. It's strictly a workshop, but we just want some kind of consensus from the city council of what to bring forward so that we can do that at a future meeting.
Okay, so we're going to, we're motioning to bring it off the table, correct?
I think we need to read the caption first, please.
I, I think he's asking about taking it off the table.
Yeah, we still need to.
We did that.
Okay.
It hasn't been voted.
But we didn't vote. No, I need to vote.
Yeah, we need to vote. So you have a first and a second?
I thought we had. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So like Dan said, this is going to increase our revenues by twelve million four hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one, mainly for three grants. The first of, of the grants is a million four fifty-five one ninety, which is through the Health Department, and that's to, to increase the COVID-nineteen vaccination capacity, and that will help fund the clinics and the staff that are at the clinics. And that is to be spent through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. The second one is the receipt of the ARPA funds, which we received on May nineteenth, and, and that's to help support public expenditure, health expenditures, address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And those are just some examples of, of what the U.S. Treasury has as captions as allowable uses. The third grant is sixty-four nine oh four for the Southwest Border Rural and Tribal Assistance, and that's a P D grant, and that's for the purchase of a K-nine and basic handler courses and some equipment. So, so that will increase revenues by twelve million four eighty-three seven eighty-one. Expenditures will be increased by a million five twenty oh ninety-four, which is the million four fifty-five one ninety for, for the, for the health grant, which, as you can see, almost five hundred thousand go in Personnel Services and Benefits and six hundred and seventy-four for the rental of the vaccination clinic.
And, and again, and I asked this the last time, these are just city employees, correct? I mean, the, the reimbursables on the, on the personnel services?
Yes, those are our, our personnel.
Just our personnel.
Right, that's so that we can get reimbursed for, for, for our personnel. And then the second expenditure is for the sixty-four nine oh four Southwest Border Rural and Tribal Assistance. So those two, the revenue and the expenditures offset. And like Dan said, we will be discussing at our workshop the possible uses for the ten million nine sixty-eight. So that, that is not included in this budget amendment. So just to recap, we will be increasing our revenues by twelve million four eighty-three seven eighty-one and our expenditures by one million five twenty oh ninety-four, and this is just in the Grant Awards Fund, which is a restricted fund.
Motion for an approval. Second.
Can we read the caption?
An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October one, twenty-twenty, through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Total budget revenues will increase to ninety-six million forty-five thousand seven hundred and seventeen, and total budget expenditures will increase to ninety-three million two hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and eight, respectively, ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion for approval. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to pay the ancillary service charges to Gexa as a result of February winter storm. Gabe.
Mayor, this item was also tabled at the last meeting.
I'd make a motion to, to remove it from table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
I'd like to keep it tabled. I'd like to keep it tabled.
What, can I ask you real quick before? So this, this, this is about the six hundred and?
Forty-nine thousand dollars?
Yeah, this is about the energy, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to keep that tabled.
Okay, so just, so I'm clear on that. Is that, where's that money going to come from? Is it coming from the money that we're going to have the workshop on?
No, sir.
On Friday?
No, sir. That's, that's from general fund monies.
It would, it would have to be paid from the general fund, fund balance.
And then?
That, that is not an allowable use of the ten point nine million dollars.
I'm sorry, did we not vote on removing it from the table?
No.
No.
No, Mayor, I did.
We did, I heard two yeses.
And then we had three noes. Or three.
Well, let's just confirm it. Is it? We have a, we did have a.
There was a motion, Mayor, there was a motion by Commissioner Metzmann and seconded by De La Rosa, and then Commissioner, what do you say? I, I don't want it removed. That's, that's what I heard, but I didn't hear it.
So it's a two to one vote?
So did I.
All right, well, okay, there's a, we do have a motion and a second to remove it from the table. So if you don't want to remove it from the table, then vote.
Against.
Against it.
Against it.
If you do want to remove it from the table, vote for it. All those in favor of the motion to remove it from the table?
Quick question, I have a quick question. Why are we, why are we tabling it? That's what I, I'm confused.
The, the last meeting, Commissioner O'Leary asked it to be tabled.
We can't really discuss, I don't think we can really discuss it unless we remove it from the table.
Okay, okay.
So if you want to discuss it, we have to remove it from the table. You can always table it again after you remove it from the table, but we can't discuss it until we remove it from the table.
Okay. We, we did have a presentation from T Cap, and I believe Margaret's still on the line to kind of explain what's on the bill.
We, we have to vote.
All right. All those in favor of removing it from the table, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll, if it remains on, it remains tabled. Item fourteen, discussion and consideration. Well, let me ask you, do you, you want to take these up? Commissioner Pedersen pointed, do you want to, no, I'm, yeah. Do you want to take these up after the executive session, or do you want to take them up now?
I want the executive session.
Yeah.
You have items related to, on the executive session?
Right, yeah, so after executive session.
After the executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right, then we'll go to item sixteen. Are there any board appointments?
I have none.
None.
I do. I want to nominate Jesse Villarreal to the Parks and Recreation Board. I want to nominate Ida Villarreal to the Senior Advisory Board. I want to reappoint Martín Borjas to the Veterans Advisory Board, and I want to nominate Justin Valdez to the Community Development Board.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
Some of them. Some of them. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. So item seventeen, executive close session regarding the following items. A pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point oh eight seven one, to discuss or deliver regarding commercial and financial information the City of Harlingen receives from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have, locate, stay, or expand in or near the city of Harlingen and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations related to Project Double Stack. B pursuant to Section five fifty-one point oh seven-two, Government Code, to deliver the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property regarding ten acres of real estate located on T Street, just north of Harrison and Harlingen, more commonly known as Harlingen, Peter Point, Block Thirty-two. C is moot. Item D, Attorney Consultation pursuant to Section five fifty-one point oh seven-two, Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice, connection to the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations regarding the employment agreement between the city manager, Dan Serrano, and the City of Harlingen. E, Attorney Consultation pursuant to Section five fifty-one point oh seven-four, Texas Government Code, to deliver the employment, employment duties, other terms and conditions of the employment agreement between city managers, Dan Serrano and the City of Harlingen, have pretty consolidated. Attorney Consultation pursuant to Section five fifty-one point oh seven-two, Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice and connection with the legally required processes and procedures to initiate any city charter amendment under Texas law related legal matters. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some of them.
All those in favor, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will be in executive session discussing matters with our attorney. There is action, possible action that could be taken after the executive session. I'm going to go to item, we are out of executive session at eight forty-four P.M. We go to item eighteen, which is consideration of possible action regarding the provision or approval of economic incentives to Project Double Stack. Is there, I think we're going to table that. Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against.
Opposed, like sign. All right, motion carries.
Page nineteen.
Go back to item fourteen, which is discussion, consideration, possible action if appropriate to amend the existing contract between the City of Harlingen and the city manager. We have citizen comment.
In today's AIM periodicals, they mention that Donna has brevity, and sometimes items like number twelve and thirteen also. But getting back to fourteen, the same newspaper indicated that obviously Texas is a foremost at-will state probably in the nation, and obviously that just means that an employee can quit, but the city has the same prerogative. And our constitution, the city charter, which has been bandied about a lot the last year, clearly agrees with the mayor that three concurring votes can hire or fire a city manager. The paramount level of the charter is the basis for refuting suggestions that the degree of a crime is the basis of employment. Further, as noted, the charter only permits the mayor a vote in the case of a tie. No veto power over three commissioners is mentioned anywhere in the document. We either follow our charter or become scofflaws. Thank you.
Okay, so item fourteen, one of the wishes of the commission.
No action, Mayor. There's just no action.
No action, okay. All right, item fifteen, discussion, consideration, possible action if appropriate to amend the Harlingen City Charter to create term limits for the city commission and mayor. Lozano, you going to speak on this?
I know.
Okay.
No action on the side of me. No action on the side.
No action.
Not this time.
Then I believe that's all of the items that I, am I right, Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, then we're, we've completed the agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.